Okay, welcome to the Town of Tingsboro Planning Board Meeting for September 5th, 2024. We'll start with introductions.
I'm Pamela Berman.
Michael Page.
Jeremy Baldwin.
Steve O'Neil.
Dave Robson.
Chaz Doughty.
All right, jumping right in, we have an A and R, 198 and 200 Sherbin Ave.
Good evening. For the record, Jeff Haniford, representing the applicant, Evan and Allison Corvus, owners of 198 and 200 Sherbin. Little background on how this happened to be here is the, Corvus was originally bought 198 Sherbin. Had an existing house on it. It was a pre-existing non-conforming lot. Their initial plan was to tear down the existing house and construct a new one. With that, they did go to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They got approvals to do that. Went to the Board of Health, got approvals for a septic system to do that. And they actually started construction, raising the existing house and doing some site work. In the process of all of that happening, the owner at 200 Sherbin passed away. So the Corvuses were able to purchase 200 Sherbin Ave. 200 Sherbin Ave is approximately two and a half acre lot, whereas 198 was about 30,000 square feet. So having both, ownership of both lots afforded them the ability to take some of the excess land from 200, add it to 198, and take a non-conforming lot and make it conforming, which will make it much easier for them to construct the new house on 198. In the meantime, they've been rebuilding the existing house at number 200. And so at this point, they came to me and said, you know, we want to make 198 a conforming lot. Give us a little more room for the house over there. So that's what we did, and that's why we're here. So now both lots are fully conforming to all zoning requirements.
We don't, just for myself here, we don't have our engineer here tonight, and he actually writes. It appears that both lots, one and Lot 2, generally meet the zoning requirements in the district. It should be noted that the existing foundation with new Lot 1 does not meet the minimum side yard setback requirements. So I don't know what you have to say with that, but I have questions for our engineer.
What would the questions be? Maybe I can answer.
For our engineer, because it generally meets, what does he mean? It generally meets the requirements, number one. And then if you're going to have your foundation that doesn't meet the requirement right now.
Well, there is no foundation. If you look at the plan.
That's, that's, that's why, I'm just telling you the notes that we have.
Yep.
So I personally don't feel comfortable signing off on the A and R, although approval not required. I just have questions for the engineer. So I myself would like to continue it until he's here at our next meeting. But we can hear from the other board members. There's enough members here if you want to go forward.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from everybody.
Okay, go ahead.
Mike, there is no current existing foundation?
No, if you look at the plan, the way it's labeled, it says former. It's been raised. So effectively, it's gone. The reason we showed it is just because we wanted to note that there was previously an existing dwelling there, but as noted, it's been raised. So I have no clue why your engineer noted it that way.
That's why I have questions, but go ahead, Jeremy.
I'm just looking at Lot 1 and the comment about the existing foundation. It looks like maybe it's the remains of the foundation of the outbuilding out back. I'm sorry, I'm looking at a plan right here on the, not looking away from you. It's out in the back after you swing around.
Yep.
So he might be talking about that. That's all I'm trying to say. But, I mean, I don't see a big issue. As, I think we just want to make sure it's right for you, because we don't want you to have to go to the planning department with a plan that doesn't meet what is intended to be here.
Yeah.
So have you tested out and thrown this by the building department first? And seen what, have any comments from them about it meeting all those specific setbacks?
The building department?
Right, the building department, the building inspector.
As far as I know, that's part of the application process. I didn't personally go and ask.
Personally, I don't see a big issue with this.
Are you referring to the ZBA?
No, he's asking about the building. Did Paul get a copy to weigh in on?
No. He generally did. The other departments don't weigh in on A and R applications.
Got you.
Does the new dwelling sit inside the A and R?
Mike, why don't we finish up and I'll come back to you. I'm sorry I skipped over you though. We'll just finish up with Jeremy.
That's okay. I'm good right now.
Does the new dwelling meet the setbacks?
I'd me?
Does the new dwelling meet the proposed setbacks?
The new dwelling will, yeah.
Steve?
I'll, I'll refer back to what Steve said. I'd rather see the engineer, our engineer, tell us what his kind of language is here that he's, he's not so sure about it. I'd rather hear from him. Chaz?
So there's no, there is no existing foundation on new Lot 1 then? That's what you're saying?
Right, that was, the building foundation, everything was raised. It's a hole in the ground, yeah. And I, I'm a little, I'm honestly a little puzzled too. I just got the report. What was it, Tuesday, I think? And it's odd that somebody would say generally.
Well, I think it says generally because he's concerned about the existing foundation, which doesn't exist, but he may not have understood that it doesn't exist, which is what's causing the confusion here.
Yeah.
So.
Didn't you get a variance for the new, didn't you get a variance for any new dwelling?
Right, there was a variance issued by the Zoning Board of Appeals for the existing foundation.
For the original, right, we're talking an A and R now, so. Anything further, Chaz?
No, that, that's it.
It's up to yourself, you know, I, like I said, I'm myself. I'm not going to vote on it until I hear from our engineer, just to clarify this, so. Do you want to wait the two weeks till our next meeting, or do you want?
Yeah.
Doesn't make sense to go through.
They're not in any particular rush timeframe issue.
I don't mean, you know, I just want to.
Just so we get it right.
Yeah.
I believe you, but, you know, he gets paid to protect the town.
It'd be good to get an explanation why it was written that way.
All right, so you're looking for a continuance for two weeks?
Yes.
Okay, can I get a motion?
And just to clarify, that was just the only issues. Have you, no other questions that I could entertain now? What I read. Okay.
Can I entertain a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue the A and R for 198 and 200 Sherbin Ave to our next meeting on September 19th.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See you in two weeks.
Sounds good.
All right, thanks. Thanks for the understanding.
No problem.
Okay, next up, 406 424 Middlesex Road, request for a two-year extension to a special permit issued on September 14th, 2022.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Pleasure to see you. As you know, I represent the applicant, principal of the applicant. Zach Steinberg is on Zoom. He's at a distance away now, so. We were in front of you in September of 2022. I'm sure you remember this project well. It's a large-scale warehouse development in the northerly end of Middlesex Road. And this is a first time ask for an extension of the approval that was granted for the special permit. We're also appearing in front of the Conservation Commission, looking for extensions of those approvals as well. As you've seen, a lot of projects, not just in Tingsboro, but nationwide, have been stalled with this magnitude because of the downturn in the capital markets and the interest rates and the inflation situation which exists. So that stalled a lot of, you know, ground-up development from happening on the original time schedule. So we're optimistic that that is going to hopefully be improving in the near future. In the meantime, over the, since the time period that we did obtain the approvals from the various local boards, we have continued to advance the project. We had to go to get an approval from MIPA. We also had to get our intersection approval, intersection approval from Mass DOT. So we've obtained our state-level approvals while, you know, we've been waiting so that we don't lose pace with the project. So we're just not sitting around doing nothing. You know, we're continuing to advance things, and hopefully, within the next two years, you'll see, you know, the shovel and the dirt. So in light of those factors, we're looking for an extension from its current expiration of September 2024 to be extended to September 2026. So, yep.
Questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
Jeremy?
Only comment I would have is maybe if it's one year. I know that we've talked, we had, we had a similar project come through, asked for an extension of the two years recently, and we gave it one. I mean, not, nothing opposed to the project or anything like that. Just to be able to come in front of the board again, understand this is important to the town. One year is, in my eyes, fair, so.
David?
Mass DOT light, all that?
Intersection approval, yep.
Good?
Yep. Zach?
What was the question?
A question about the Mass DOT approval for the intersection.
Yeah, so we had submitted, there was a bunch of feedback. So we had submitted, there's additional step with Mass DOT. Are you guys hearing the feedback or no?
No, we can hear you. You're breaking up a little bit, but we hear you somewhat.
So Mass DOT had an additional step to get approval of the intersection, which requires submission of an Isform Intersection Control Evaluation. So we submitted all the information. We provided all the preliminary of what we were going to do there, and they responded with some comments. We updated some information. And then they gave us the approval that the traffic signal is the only solution to the traffic condition that will be introduced at that intersection. So that is effectively their approval, short of a building permit, which we wouldn't get until we fully designed the intersection anyway.
Okay.
I'll, I'd be the same way. We did the last one we did was for a year, I think. I think it was with you, wasn't it?
I, I don't.
It was a Kendall Road project?
Yeah, it was.
Right, I think it was. So I'd be good with a year.
What did we do for BAPS recently? Didn't we go two years on BAPS?
We went two years on that one, yep.
So I, I think at the time, we had come in for the other one when you were talking about the year. I don't know that we were dealing with the same capital market struggles that we are now. I can't remember exactly. But I, I think a year is a little short for a project of this magnitude. Same with BAPS. So, I mean, because it's a first-time ask, I mean, typically, the board has routinely granted these requests, you know, as long as the applicant has continued to advance the rights under the permit. I just think with something of this magnitude, that a year may be a little tight, because to toll it, we're going to have to pull an actual building permit within that first year. And the reality is that, you know, we still have to go out into the marketplace to get construction-level drawings and things of that nature, which is probably going to take the better part of a year, and then look to bid out a lot of the work. So I really would ask you to consider two years.
Chaz?
Yeah, so we had originally discussed at length when we did our initial approval for this project, the height of the building.
Yep.
And I thought that we had made it abundantly clear that we did not want an extension beyond, I believe it was 36 feet. And then you guys went before ZBA and had that height changed on us. Is that the intention of what you're going to do in front of ZBA again?
No, what, I mean, whatever our approvals are now, we're looking to extend those existing approvals. We're not looking to modify the project at all. And there was, there was justification for that. Zach, I don't know if you want to weigh in on what the necessity was for the height adjustment.
Sure, yeah, so the producer of the request was that, given the status of the capital markets, very lax attitude that investment companies are having towards investing in really any development in any market around the country of any size. The idea was that if we have additional height, we open ourselves up to additional universe of tenants, which is cold storage and some other higher bay type of users. So the, the kind of typical height in those buildings are 40 feet clear and above. The additional, the initial building that we designed, given the height restriction at 45 feet, only gave us the ability to go up to 36 foot clear. So even though we had gotten additional 10 feet of height restriction, the intentions so far have been to do less height, because the plan still would be ideally to do a distribution warehouse tenant. But since we have not identified a tenant yet, we want to give ourselves as much flexibility as possible.
So I don't recall height being that significant of an issue when we were here for the original special permitting process. Plus, when we applied for the ZBA variance, they solicited departmental comments, which would have included your board, and I do not recall any negative comments coming from the planning board with respect to that application at that time. So we would really just be looking for an extension of our original approvals. But again, because of the financial situation, we're looking to maximize the viability of the project. And I know it's a town, it's a project that the town obviously wants to see happen, so. You know, typically, the, this board and all the boards have been very supportive of trying to maximize the viability of these projects. So I think the height variance that was granted, I don't think is particularly significant in terms of its orientation on the site. The real focus of those hearings was tree clearing, tree plantings, and those types of issues, which we mitigated several times with different plan revisions, the agreement to post a tree clearing bond. That is my recollection of the most significant concerns at the time, because if we went and clear-cut the lot, then the project didn't get off the ground. The town was concerned, you know, what the aftermath would be. So, you know, the developer worked very hard to mitigate and address those concerns, which the board obviously approved the project, so.
I do remember the tree thing, but I do also remember our board with the height. We definitely had issue with the height.
But there were no negative comments as part of the application process with the ZBA. I would presume if the planning board had an issue, then you would have.
No, we, we, we were not happy with that.
There was nothing submitted to the ZBA.
Yes, we did. And I was at the meeting, and I didn't, I was opposed to having the height extension. Eric Solano at the time also made it known that we were opposed to that as well, so.
I, I don't believe that comment ever came forward to the ZBA, based on my recollection.
Possible.
Yeah.
Anything further on that?
No, I'm good.
I mean, again, we're just, we're not here for project modifications. We're here for an extension of the approvals that we have.
We're not, but there was an issue with the height. We went over it. And then I guess there was a variance granted, which doesn't concern this board tonight. I guess, I guess my own opinion also is I get that the capital markets and things have turned for the worse for, I guess, investors. But at the same time, you've already had two years, so I'm sure a lot of stuff is probably in place, or you don't have a tenant, and that's why you didn't stop building, possibly. I don't know. But the site work on the, could begin, I'm sure. And you guys could start the site work within the year time and do your sidewalks. And once that project has started, then, you know, probably be no need to come back here. So my own feeling is I'd like to keep it going. And if you have to come back for an additional year, then we can see where we're at at that point, but that's just my own opinion.
If that's ultimately where it lands, then that's where it lands.
Anybody else, Chaz, you have something?
Yeah, I mean, the, the height thing was extremely important to us at the time, because we didn't want to see that building sticking up above everything, because it's so huge.
Yeah, and I don't believe you're going to see that. I don't think this height differential makes any difference in the visual from the street. And that was something that was discussed at the Zoning Board of Appeals level as well. So, and again, your approval has nothing to do with that, because that's a separate board with a separate grant of authority. So really, all you're doing is extending what you had granted to us, which was a special permit.
Do you, one more thing, if you have. Do you, do you guys got the, like, does your client have the land all locked up and everything ready? Like, that's all good to go, like, you guys are, okay. No, I definitely want to see the project get off the ground.
I do.
And again, it's a first-time ask.
Now, they, and just a question, I don't know who could answer it, maybe Pam. I know that Matt granted, was going for the Mass grant for sidewalks. Is that all in place also? Do we know?
I think you're thinking of the other project, which was the sidewalk extension.
Kendall Road.
I'm sorry.
Which is.
I'm sorry, confused.
Yeah.
My fault.
Kendall Road was done.
Yep.
Yep. Sorry about that.
I mean, would you, would be, would you guys be good with a year? Just, it's just a communication thing?
I get it, I get it. You want to try to keep the project moving. I, I mean.
And we also don't want to hurt your client.
Of course, yeah. I mean, the ask is two, but if it's one, and, you know, we need to come back here, because, you know, of X, Y, and Z, we'll come back here again for X, Y, and Z and justify the additional year. But obviously, I mean, the permit's expiring this month, so we have to obtain something. So if you're only comfortable with a year, then you're only comfortable with a year.
Well, how about if we ask the board, any suggestions for motion, any motions?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion to, for 406 and 424 Middlesex Road for a one-year extension to the special permit issued on September 14th, 2022.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed to a one-year extension?
I'm opposed to the project because of the height extension, which.
Okay. Four in favor, one opposed.
So that passes.
Passes.
Let me just make a couple of notes, and I'll get out of your way. And I appreciate your consideration.
Good luck.
No, thanks for keeping us updated. Thank you.
Hopefully, you get a client within the next 30 minutes, and we're shoveling the ground next week.
Yes.
Right?
Yep.
Okay, next up, we're going to hear from 11 Jakes Road. Tim and Jen Wilson, applicant for a special permit under section 9.3, temporary independent living quarters of the Tingsboro zoning bylaws, as well as any other permit relief as may be required for the construction of a 28 by 28 addition to be used as a temporary living quarters.
Hi, Tim Wilson, from 11 Jakes Road, and my wife Jennifer.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad and the abuser's list.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Sorry. Next, Chaz.
So you have, you have the plans in front of you, I believe. We have, there's, there's no issue with setbacks or anything? It's, it's just mainly because we're putting an apartment in that would be the, the issue where we're here.
All set? Okay.
Yeah, I'm fine with the plans.
Any questions? Jeremy?
I have no questions.
Dave?
I have no questions.
Chaz?
I have no questions, but we seem to have some comments from TEC that we should take a look at. So I guess, really, Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if these plans are addressing comments, and that they came in after these comments were, were made. Because the, in the applicant, in the, in the TEC review, it talks about a plans for July 9th and June 29th, and these are dated September 4th. And this still says June 29th. So I'm not sure if they're all relevant or not.
So the architect had drawn the plans for the actual apartment in garage addition. When we came to see Pam, she said that we needed the plot plan by, done by an engineer to show where all the buildings and setbacks were. We ordered that on August 5th, and he just dragged his feet, and we were able to obtain it yesterday. But it does show everything.
This is the certified.
Yeah.
It is a certified, it is signed. You'll notice that it is signed.
And the, what is it, 798 square feet, roughly?
That, that's the main part of it, but the ex.
It's going to go off at a little, a 45-degree angle. It's going to come off the building four feet, then go at a 45-degree angle, and then turn the garage. Because if we came off straight, we, a driver would be, like, parking lot up here. So we put it at an angle just to make that driveway so so big.
So what's the total square footage?
1194.
1194, good, good.
I do have a, a calculation drawing here for that, if it's needed.
I'd say it's fine, but we'll just take it for the record.
Sure.
So the only thing is the architect hasn't seen the completed plan for, for the plot plan. I have no problem with the addition. I think a certified plot plan showing the setbacks. Is fine. I don't know. Want to, Chaz, you want to?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine.
Fine with it, okay. Okay, any other questions?
I have a question.
Yep.
Oh, well, excuse me. Walk up, come in our microphone, please. State your name and your address. Thank you.
Phil Kalowski, 93 Jakes Road.
Yep.
The application says temporary independent living. It sounds like an in-law apartment.
Exactly what it is. That's what it is.
Except I don't understand the temporary part. What happens when the in-laws go away? I mean, you're not going to tear it down, right?
Correct, they don't have.
So it's not temporary.
Well, that's what they call it, though. So what happens is they have to record it at the Registry of Deeds so that the next people that buy it know that when they buy it, it's not a two-family house. It was temporary, and they would have to, as of today, they would have to come in and probably be granted the same. and probably be granted the same grant if they get granted it. If they were to wait until February, it looks like the law is changing, and they wouldn't even have to come to this board because it's been passed by the state that boards don't have any oversight of it now.
Right now, there are two standalone structures on the house. It looks like they're going to be torn down and replaced by that.
No.
Where, can you show me the, the deal point?
I can see it right there.
So this is where our garage is now, where we go in. It's going to go to the right of it. The, in the back is a shed, and then just a covered patio, there are no walls to it. It's just a cover over patio. But this is what is going to be added to the existing garage.
Thanks, that's, that's good, thanks. Go ahead, sir.
I guess I was all the questions I had.
No, and, and they're going to be off that lot line, forty-eight point nine feet, almost fifty feet.
Their laws are thirty feet, right?
Yes, yep.
Yep.
Yeah, for the side.
Setbacks, third.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the audience? Far against, okay, looking for a motion? What are you looking for, Javi? You're gonna?
I'm looking for my paper, I just put it back there.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve eleven Jocks, Jakes Road for a special permit under section nine point three, temporary independent living quarters of the Tingsborough bylaws, as well as any permit relief that may be required for the construction of a twenty-eight by twenty-eight addition to be used as a temporary independent living quarter.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
I assume that the septic system is big enough to handle.
That's, that's, that's totally up to the town. They can have them increase it or whatever, sir.
We do have a four-bedroom septic, and we currently only have three bedrooms right now.
Just be adding four bedrooms with this.
So, yep.
All set, all set?
Have a good night.
Awesome, thanks, guys.
Yeah, have a good night.
Good luck.
Take care, boy. Take care, bud.
Okay.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of August first, twenty twenty-four, as written.
All those in favor?
Second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes.
Any new business?
Can't find my letterhead.
New business, new business.
There we go, I got it. Approval minutes, new business. Any topics the chairman did not reasonably anticipate?
Mr. Chair, I just would like to make a note that the, the bylaw committee has been working on the sign bylaw, which we will have a draft of at our next meeting for us to look over and hopefully approve. We need to have a couple of public hearings for that to be advertised. We got the, the final draft of that today. We have a meeting on Tuesday next week where I would assume we will approve that for, and then it will come to the, the planning board for review and approval and hopefully sign off for the May town meeting.
Excellent.
Great, main things are what, electronic signage, that's a big one, we're discussing.
October town meeting, sorry.
Yep.
But, yeah, that's probably the biggest one that we've been debating, so.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yep.
Pam, to you, any progress on Frost Road, we'll call it?
They removed all the dumpsters and the equipment.
But other than that, no other communication of any further honoring there?
I got from them is they're, they're not moving forward with redoing the parking lot at this time because they don't have the funds.
Can we get town council to weigh in on that for us, to, if, to see if there's anything we can do?
I can surely ask.
And if not, this one, have something in place and some more bite for the next one that should come in front of us because we, we just can't allow this to happen to the residents?
Probably going to come down to conditioning things, right?
That's what I'm saying, like, if we could get pointed in what direction we want to go so we make sure we're a lot stronger.
Really the only Jeremy has.
Because this is.
I think, in the past, we discussed it, and I think we need to put conditions on things before occupancies. And now we're there, I think you can control.
Yeah, we got to do something, we can't.
That'd happen a lot, right?
Yeah.
Because we, and then it's like, well, hindsight, we should have conditioned that, we should.
But that's what I'm wondering, is there anything we can do, though? You know what I mean, I just, it's something for the attorney to, hopefully, maybe, maybe we can, maybe we can't. But it just doesn't, it doesn't seem right that someone was able to come in front of us in good faith, we give them their permit, and then they turn around and say, eh, we're all set. We, we don't have the money to do that, so we're not, we can't, we just can't, we can't allow that as a board.
There's projects in this town that have started twenty years ago that.
Don't remind me.
That can still continue once they pick up a shovel and start again.
They did indicate that if they, if, if they were going to do anything, that they would come back to the board for a, a new special permit, you know, a new site plan for the parking lot.
I, I know, I know they're permitted to have an adult facility daycare over there, I mean, safety wi, like, this is why, this is stuff I want to run by the attorney, like.
I think the unfortunate thing with that one is that it was, they did the work that they wanted to do, but they left the work that they didn't want to do.
Correct.
The town wanted, right?
Yeah.
Because the stormwater infrastructure, which was pretty much the most important, really, was, is complete.
Yep, I remember you saying that, so.
We, we do need to have, I guess, driveways and parking lots completed before we give occupancies.
Yep.
You know, even if we just gave a temporary occupancy for six months until they got it done, you know, but allowed, I'm saying to come back, but I think we got a stat structure in it, so that they give us everything that we ask for before them getting what they need to line their pockets or do whatever.
Sure.
Before they take care of the whole project.
This one was a little different, though, because it was just site plan review, it wasn't a use permit, use special permit, so.
Even though they switched over to the daycare, the adult daycare facility?
They, they're under the religious exempt umbrella.
Exempt, I think, from everything, religion, so.
So if they have any kind of daycare, they have to be licensed by the state or whatever, it's, it's not the planning board.
But the town granted them.
That would be the select board, probably.
Okay, so, what, if we can.
The, the bottom line is we should protect all the projects from now on.
Bingo.
On us, yeah, it is on us to make sure.
And we'll restrict it as much as we can until the lawyer says we can't.
Perfect.
All right, any old business, which we just went over?
One, one more thing, any update on the drainage over at the Encore?
I haven't heard anything recently.
That, once again, if we can put that on for a topic, maybe the next one, because we will have Dave here from TEC, so we'll touch a little base on that, because I know there's, there's multiple problems over there on, on both sides now.
Can invite them in also, Pam, if they want to come in and be part of the discussion. They were kind of blindsided, they, attorney said they were.
Yeah, that would be kind of nice.
So we'll invite them in also, sound good?
Absolutely.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none? Thirty minutes late. Said five after.